Thank you. We will resume our spending meeting right now. And move into reports for administration. Our first report is asset management update. And that's nineteen four and one thirteen on the agenda. Administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. So we are here this evening to provide you a bit of an update on the progress made towards the establishment of our asset management program. Last time we were before you was November twenty twenty one, so. Shannon, can you just play it around?
Just being not sharing.
Sorry. I need to do something.
Yeah, is it ready? Is it? Yeah, just.
Okay, so as I was saying, November twenty twenty one was the last time we were before you. So just, you know, a brief agenda here. I'm going to give you a bit of highlights on what we were doing over the past this year, I guess. And then Chris Vanderheiden from T S D Citywide is with us online and he's going to give you with some highlights from our shiny new asset management plan. Cool. So we've seen this graphic before, I'm sure, and it's often just used to show the continuous process of sustainable delivery and those assets we use to deliver those services. It shows the basic concepts behind asset management. And of course, in order to successfully achieve any one of the items on the graphic, there's a team of people, resources, information and energy required. And of course, it just wouldn't be asset management unless every concept was connected and dependent on each other. So it makes these things a little bit time consuming to do normally. To date, Hinton has completed our asset management policy, our strategy and our first asset management plan. When you look at the wheel, it's always going in motion. So we will be doing this several times and proving everything as we go. So this gives you a bit of an idea of what administration has been up to since November last year. The G I S room, it's kind of smaller, theirs will maybe really know, can't see it, the G I S review court and structure. So this means our road sewer storm and water network in G I S. So mostly we did this contact, we don't have a G I S person in house. And really that means it's going through our line work and making sure everything matches and some new subdivisions and missing areas that we knew just weren't there. So paying attention to that and dedicating some time. So type material, when it was built, things like that. General asset registry reorganization and focused fleet validation. So really what that was is our citywide asset registry. So this is the software we use to keep track of our assets. In the past, it was used just really for financial means for tangible capital asset reporting. So that's a financial thing that Alicia could probably give you a lot more information about than I can, but really it was to explain it was used for financial reasons and not really the best for asset management planning and the way that we can use it for asset management. So what we did was went back in the system. It's really kind of boring and it's all about data, but we reorganized everything so that's going to work for us management better, but also still work for finance. That fair amount of work, but is what it is. We also essentially went through our fleet data line by line to make sure everything aligns, which took a fair amount of work as well, but helped us improve our processes between our two departments, three or four departments actually, but mainly between finance, finding infrastructure and most certainly just to make sure everything is aligned, new templates and processes, things like that. So kind of proud of that collaboration work that we've done. We find your estimated lifecycle replacement cost for our core assets. So this was really an exercise to better understand how long our core assets last for. So if we're estimating that they last for, you know, thirty years because that's what, you know, the industry standard is, well, that might not be quite true for Hinton. So maybe they last for thirty five years or twenty five years, depending on what our conditions are. So we were just trying to look at that and have better estimates so that we can have better estimates for you, council, and for also senior leadership work in the assets. Staff training, believe that's self explanatory what that is, and reporting templates. So these are things that we would do when we're reporting after a new project or after we've done some improvement. So sometimes our communication wasn't the best and some of that information was getting lost between departments. So we're trying to improve that to make sure everybody's getting the right information at the right time. And then all of this work we're trying to do to help build this asset management plan. So some of that work was a team effort, of course, across the organization to draw some of the wealth of knowledge and expertise that we have folks all over the place, which was, you know, workshops in person and online with T S D Citywide and then with ourselves, confirmed financial resources, allocations, defining general lifecycle activities. So, you know, things like, do we do crack ceiling? How often? When? What about hydro flushing? Things like that. Then first replacement costs. So we saw a fair amount of inflation this year. So that was kind of how to kind of look at what do we actually pay for things. Sorry, that was a mouthful. That'll be my longest winded one. Just giving an idea of what those things mean. So data, we talk a lot about data in asset management and what does that mean? We're, we're always talking about it. It takes a lot of time. And these are the things that we mean. So where is the type? How long it is? How? What's the diameter? How old it is? How long it's going to last for? What the condition is? So all of this information we're trying to collect so that we can build a better foundation. Really to let you guys know what we're going to do with our assets. So we'll get to the point where we have this at our fingertips and say, what is the state of, you know, our water network? And we'll be able to tell you right now. But we're not quite there yet. We're building foundations. We're building frameworks. And we just honestly, we don't have the staff to get it all into the system right now. So we're working on bits and pieces as we can with the people that we have and the systems that we are. So, onto the next slide. So when we look at the amount of information we need to collect, validate, maintain and update, support an asset management program similar to other municipalities, we're faced with even resource capacity challenge. Our current staff resources, we are able to continue to move our program forward although at a bit of a slower pace than we originally planned. So for twenty twenty three, we've narrowed our focus a bit. Looking at activities more like focusing on fleets and that background data work I talked about earlier. And adjusted some of our workflows to focus more on asset management, less on some of the other things that we can adjust for this year anyway, to bridge them, some of that gap. We're also looking at applying for some summer student funding. Which other municipalities have had some success in so that we can have summer students focus on very specific tasks. They can collect a whole bunch of data over the summer months. Essentially, you send them off in the field with the GPS and say, collect this and that, and they can lots of them, if we're lucky enough to be able to get a technical person, they can also include that into our G I S network, for example. So as we move into one system for assets aligned with our work orders as well, we're planning on implementing maintenance manager, which is workplace, our work order system. It becomes a lot more important to have a dedicated staff person to be able to manage like quality control processes, in-house training, ongoing data collection and the database support. We are anticipating that we'll likely need somebody in twenty twenty four to help manage this. So here's a look at the overall plan for continuation of this quarter on to twenty twenty five. So as I've been talking about, we are in the process of building the program from the ground up. There are processes and change management elements to implement along with the collection of foundational data into the central asset registry. It's a multi-year effort that is dependent on a multitude of factors such as staff workload, skill sets, budget approvals, billable tools and software, consulting support, training, et cetera. So you'll see data here mentioned a lot. This is really what we base our predictions and advice on. Therefore, we strive to make this as accurate and as possible so that the decisions can be based on empirical data and backed up with solid reasoning. The other reason is that data is constantly changing and needs updating. So assets get older, they get damaged, we have a new project through maintenance work on it. All that stuff needs to be updated in the system. Or we just simply have new information. So an example of that would be the C C T data that we're this year, we put that in the system and now we have great new information about the state of those pipes. The other thing you see on here is maintenance manager that we're implementing over several years. That is the replacement of our work order system. So the reason we're doing that is it integrates directly with our asset management software. So we're doing the work order on the actual asset. They're not, right now they're a separate system. We want to be able to have the system talk to it. So if we do a work order, like work on a truck, that work order is on that asset. So we know when we do an improvement project, we know that that truck is going to get improved, the condition improves when they do work on it, for example. So the same system would work for pipes, for roads, et cetera. Right now they're separated. Anyway, as we build a more complete asset management registry, inclusive of more of the detailed lifecycle activities for assets will include risk analysis and the framework for building that for more assets. Along with level of service specific assets. So depending on what kind of level of service you want for a park, it will depend on how we maintain that as well, for example. And to wrap all that up, we'll have another asset management plan, update the end of it along with data governance policies. So that's important that we maintain things the same as we look forward. That's a lot. So as we wrap up at the end of twenty twenty five, the idea is to have this foundation of an asset management program sort of for all of our major asset categories. So that includes, you know, fleet, water, sewer, storm, bridges and culverts, facilities, park. We hit them all. But once all that foundation is set up, the idea is to now go around the circle again, look at what we're doing. Are we doing it right? What are our processes? Are we doing the processes properly? You know, can we improve on this? You know, maybe we don't have an asset category in there that we want to add, like for example, right now I don't think we have streetlights in there. Should we add streetlights? Is it worthwhile to track those? You know, we don't need to track every pencil in the organization, but what about the things that really do cost us money? Like, that's the idea here. So that's why you're seeing this circular thing. Start with the big, really expensive things because obviously that's a big impact, but then you can get really granular if you really want to, but I just question is, do we need to? So with that, I'll take any questions. And then following that, we'll pass it over to Chris.
So, I do have my own dollar. Quick question. We started this, or my memory says we started this big time asset management in our last term. And asset management is, is, you know, our buildings, our roads, our forests, so big. Out of a hundred percent, where would we be now, Mindy, on this whole journey? What would we be maybe at thirty percent complete?
If I may, Madam Chair, I think to give you a percentage right now in terms of where we at, I may want to break it up. So if you should ask the question, you know, if, do we know what we have underground right now? The answer would be yes. Do we know the condition of each of those undergrounds right now? No. So where we're at for that process, we probably at fifteen percent. And what Mindy shared with council and the committee this evening was about the journey to get us there. So we can press one button and say, okay, that's going to cost us two million in twenty thirty. But you have to do this in twenty twenty, so that twenty thirty can become a reality. So it's, unfortunately, we can't give you a percentage, but if I break it down where I just did, it gives you an idea where we at, because I remember your question to me very early in the day when you said to me, what is our underground looking like and are we safe? Or will we see a major collapse of thirty million dollars? And the answer was no. But there is a presentation that I'm going to bring forward to council before budget time that I'm going to show you some of our underground conditions that will excite you and some will disappoint you. But is it possible?
More exciting than disappointing. So hopefully that ends.
Okay. Well, you know what? I just quickly, I can remember back in our last term, Councilor Haas and I attending a asset management seminar in Stonefield, and the municipalities that were there that did not have an asset management plan, talked about failures. We, with this, I think it's setting us up for success and I'm thrilled. I know. So, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Pedka. Going back a bit to the potential additional staff in twenty twenty four, what kind of work would they do from a layman's perspective? Like, is this data inputting, et cetera, et cetera? Any, any insight on what that position actually entails?
Yeah, it would be data inputting. Also, it would be just managing things. So I mean, we are doing this off the corner of our desk, right? So once the stuff starts to really take hold, there is a lot of managing of its people, its data, its information, its system. So I mean, we can lean on people for that to do in their day-to-day work as well, right? We can train people, you know, gather information. And, you know, it becomes the role of somebody if they go and they they're out mowing a park, then they can say, oh, there's graffiti there and they can collect that, say, hey, this has been, you know, that kind of thing. But there needs to be somebody that manages the backend that says, oh, hey, you know, there's things happening in the system. Who's the expert? Who manages it? That's kind of also the thing. Or you have a summer student that comes and collects all the day and where do they go to? You know, I can use some of that, but I don't have capacity, for example, to do all of it, to manage the whole system. And that's kind of the conundrum that a lot of people find is you have some people that tend to start it, but they don't. Once they get to the point where they have a functioning system, it's tough for people to do it with the twenty percent or twenty five percent or whatever of their capacity workload to manage the system. And you really need, for lack of a better word, a gatekeeper to make sure everything's going in properly because I'm sure you've all heard data, you know, garbage in, garbage out, and that's what you'll get. And all this effort will be wasted if it goes that way.
Much better. Thank you through the chair to committee. I just want to build on what Mindy has shared. To have a dedicated person. So there's, there's different levels of gathering. So there's gathering of information at the field level where, you know, there lines, points and polygons. We know we're changing out a valve or we're adding a park bench or so there's that kind of information that's always coming in and someone needs to validate that information as yes, it's the right asset. We've gathered the right information about it. This is how it goes in. But I think the other really important component is that coordination between departments. So that we're all adding information in a constructive, consistent manner into the asset management. And then I don't want to minimize the impacts for the finance department with our asset management as well. So for every asset that we have in there, we have to assign a financial replacement value for. And so with that, there's a lot of coordination between departments because who has the expertise to pull that information together? It needs to be updated and that's what's going to build the asset management plan that's going to forecast for budget. That's really the fundamental goal of it is to forecast for budget moving forward. And so when we have a lot of this data coming in, that's wonderful, but we got to make sure that we're collecting the right information about it for valuation. And then we've got to work with finance to make sure that those projections annually are adjusted for things like inflation, adjusted for other things that could be impacting the organization longer. So that's kind of that poor person is a gatekeeper. As Mindy mentioned, it's kind of the language we've been using, but it's at that coordinator, coordinator level to work between departments.
Thank you. Most memorable, Barish.
Thank you. That was essentially my question, but so this person would be an administrator, not to be an engineer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Haas.
Yeah, thank you for this. I mean, it's, one of the things that's, I like to see is twenty twenty five having that system. I mean, we, as council raised, we were talking about this last term and it was a long ways out. We're getting closer, but what I'm also hearing is, of course, we're getting closer, but it's still held up with the lack of, you know, the, the power to get it done. So happy to hear that we're doing, you know, looking at that, you know, a summer student. So I mean, that's always valuable. I'm just curious, and maybe this isn't a question for you, but you know, we are getting an intern. Is there any, like, can you get potentially interns that are more specialized in that? So that is there an opportunity to kind of look into that pool potentially for this? And that's just one question. I guess the other question is, is that, you know, contractors that if we're, because as we sit and speak, assets are depleting. They're, they're, they're breaking down, you know, they're, they're, and, and we're not getting that data in there. The further they deplete, the more money it's going to cost us down the road. So I guess some of the mind, you know, if we were, because I'm happy to hear that you said that if we don't, if we don't manage this efficiently, effectively, then this is all not going to help, right? So I'm happy to hear, but to get to that point, is it a matter of we just need to contract, get that information to kind of get this moving along quicker? Is that a possibility? Does that exist?
Thank you through the chair to Councilor Haas and committee. There is an option to pull in some consulting assistance for it. I think I just want to start first with your intern conversation. I don't know that an intern is the right word. There are G I S specific people that could help us, students that come out of a G I S program for that data gathering. But the real, the real workload, so, so as the asset management grows, people that are on the ground every day, our utility staff, public work staff, they're going to be the ones funneling that information in because they're out there managing the asset, they're blowing snow, they're on their equipment, they're doing things. So that information will come, it's just getting it in initially. But the real, the real value in having somebody in the background organizing it and a contractor could perhaps do some of it, but it's that organization. There's a lot of background development to do. So when Mindy was mentioning that, you know, developing of profiles, I think Chris can speak to that when he speaks on his side of the equation with Citywide is that we manage our roads, we replace them at fifteen years or twenty years or whatever the case is, but we do uphold management, we do, you know, whatever, we do other things overlays and things like that and it's building that backend to facilitate that information. That is a lot of the work. And so you could consult some of that out, but but it just takes time to build that. And so we're, we're building it as fast as we can. I guess that answers the question.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Taylor.
How much does this cost to date? How much has it cost by two thousand twenty five? And have we used any of the results so far? And are we going to use the results in the upcoming budget? Just ballpark numbers are good.
Yeah, thank you through the chair to committee, Councilor Taylor. You'll see an operational business case for asset management. I believe we're going for seventy five thousand for the next year. I don't have a total for what we'd be at at twenty twenty five off the top of my head, but you will see a business case this year for it.
And it'll have more of those numbers?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the second part of the question was the use of the information so far. This has been going on for a number of years. How will we use the information so far?
You'll see in the presentation from Citywide how we're using that information and some of the, the high level financial information we're gleaning from it already. With, with obvious areas for improvement for us, but you will see some of that coming through this initial preliminary asset management plan.
Will any of this be used in the budget coming up to prioritize projects or anything?
Not at this time specifically, no.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Council, any other questions?
If I may, we could pass it over to Chris now at this time.
Thank you, Mindy. I just want to confirm everyone can hear me.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. And I will share my screen. It'll just confirm that we will be looking at the right screen and just have to this up properly. So can you confirm we're looking at the town of Hinton twenty two, twenty two asset management plan presentation?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, councilors and staff members for having me present the progress on Hinton's, the town of Hinton's asset management plan. Just to expand the conversation earlier, I find it very interesting and I've worked with municipalities throughout Canada, more specifically in Alberta. I've been working with municipalities in Alberta for the last six and a half years. And the best way I can put, when we talked about, when Mindy was talking about resources, you're talking about someone that could undertake organizing all of this. Essentially, that person is the glue to your asset management program. And I've seen this, some very good success stories throughout Canada. Municipality, small, large, they've hired on full-time staff just to be an asset management coordinator. In a sense of they are the glue. They ensure that people are following processes, procedures, the data is being implemented into the system in a systematic fashion. It's up to date and it's consistent. And even in some cases, I've heard some really good feedback. One comes to mind, a small, mid-sized town, similar to the size of population of yourself in Northwestern Ontario, very remote. I would say more remote than yourselves when it comes to, you know, large centers with services. They proposed to hire on a full-time staff as an asset management coordinator. They pitched it to council and, and to the committee. They bought into it and what they found was the return on their investment is twofold, meaning it's not costing them any money, even though they've added a new resource to their team. This person allows all your other staff and your senior management team to do what they're hired to do. Engineers will do their engineering. Road superintendents will manage roads, finance managers will manage the finances and the asset management coordinator will keep everything together. And they're, they've actually said that they're saving money by having this person in position. So I'm just, I'm trying to voice, have a voice through experience for your team at Hinton because I know they have done an amounts, immense amount of work, giving up a lot of their time to me. I feel like a door-to-door salesman sometimes knocking on the door saying, when can we meet? Because I need some time. So, you know, Mindy and Debbie Winston and even Shelby, when I was on site, giving up their time, I greatly appreciate it. And I'm sure everyone there greatly appreciates it. So without further ado, we'll get into the presentation. Mindy had mentioned about the, the concepts around asset management. And the seven key questions around asset management are, what do we own? For one, the second question is, where is it? The third question is, how much is it worth? So I think through Mindy's update, you're already starting to see that they are making progress because they, they just identified some of their core infrastructure and fleet. They know what they own, where it is. Now they know how much it's worth and I'm going to talk a little bit more of that in a little bit here. What condition is it in? That's the next piece, the next question in asset management, because we need to know how our assets are performing. Beyond that, the next question is, now that we have good condition data, what do we need to do to it? Not only that, when do we need to do it? And on top of that, we have to know how much it's going to cost to be able to do that. So those are the seven key questions to asset management. And then there's one overarching question that you must consider as well. And it's, do we really need that asset? So looking at your portfolio of assets, you know, we look at facilities, how So looking at your portfolio of assets, you know, we look at facilities, how much it costs, you look at the utilization. And sometimes those hard decisions need to be made, whether an asset needs to be discommissioned, decommissioned, because it's not being used. And it's costing the town too much money. So those are the main questions and that just kind of ties into what what Mindy was uh, mentioning earlier. And why my, there's my slide moving forward. So this is more for the public. Um, I know everyone in in the committee meeting here tonight and Madam Chair that. Asset management is service management. And when the public think of assets, they think of roads and everything else, but. Tie that back into the services that provides to your community. You know, your roads and bridges provide that transportation service, connects people to work, to play. To all the things they enjoy in life. Uh, water mains, treatment plants, provide that safe, safe and quality drinking water. It's an environmental service. Parks and recreational, I don't have to explain that, it's a recreational service. It does bring a quality of life to your community, and that seems to be the hot topic today, no matter where you are in Canada. Uh, vehicles and equip- equipment, for example, support emergency service delivery or even operational. Uh, what you do to your assets and when you do it is usually done by equipment. So that's part of, you know, that um, that fleet management. So what does asset management involve? From an ISO fifty five thousand perspective. I- is the coordinated activity of an organization to realize value from its assets. And from a local government perspective. It's ties right back into that service that you provide to your community. But it's a bit of a juggling act. It's it's a balance of cost, performance and risk. We know if we want better performance out of our assets, it's going to cost more money. If we don't want to put the money into it, obviously the per- performance is going to decline. On top of that. That those two equations there between cost and performance then also ties into risk. If your assets are performing at lower standard, your risk goes up. And so on. So I think you're going to understand how this all ties back into that levels of service. So today, we're going to look at the valuation of Hinton's asset portfolio, and this is based off uh, twenty twenty one year-end data. So just for example, like the road network, it's uh, estimated at a hundred and forty one point seven million dollars with the new inventory and data. That we got through this project to date. If I go back and I did a comparison, if I already use the numbers and the data from your old inventory, which is historic inventory. The valuation of your road network would be somewhere around ninety four million dollars. That's a huge difference. But that's the same thing I see with municipalities throughout Canada. And I'm going to bring some other municipalities, local municipalities to. Closer to the Hinton area in Alberta that may give you a little bit of perspective on this. In a little bit, uh, potable no- wa- water network estimated now at a hundred and thirty six point five million, but yet. That is the main system. That's your trunks, your pipes, uh, your hydrants, your valves, all the things that kind of. Are a part of that distribution system, but it does not include updated data for your water treatment plant. We're looking at the one th- one hundred and thirty six point five million dollars today, and if I look back at your potable water network inventory from the past, it would only be valued at one fifty one million dollars. Um, similar to the wastewater network, died at eighty one point four million dollars today, and. If I look at the historic data, it would be valued at eighteen million dollars in today uh, today. Uh, based on the historical information. So I s- I I think you can see where I'm going with this. Data is crucial to get the true picture of your asset portfolio. And then fleet was similar to what, and fleet's one of the easier asset classes to manage, uh, obviously because it's not as complex as a wastewater, water treatment plant. Um, if we look at the uh, total um. Replacement cost for your core asset portfolio, it's four hundred and nine million dollars today. We do know there's still work to be done. Uh, core assets, when I say core assets, I'm talking about underground infrastructure like storm. Sanitary water, roads and bridges. Uh, the non-core assets, which is your facilities, parks and recreation and and so on. Is it equals about one hundred and sixteen point nine million. As you can see, core infrastructure makes up a good percentage of your asset portfolio. And if we just look at that data today and we tag that to, what does every homeowner? Have stake in the infrastructure that in the services that your town provides. Equates to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars per household. That's where their taxes rates go to towards, and that is a great number. To bring to the public, so they really understand what their taxes are paying for. Um, state of the infrastructure condition. So this is a really good indication of where you're at in your condition assessment program, as Winston was mentioning earlier. This is what we have to date. So for the road network, bridges and culverts, there are seventy four percent of those assets have been assessed by internal staff. If we look at your bridges and coffers, it's all age-based condition. We have a very minimal percentage for equipment that was assessed. And then fleet was at eighty four percent. Um, so again. Age-based condition does not give you a true indication of how your assets are performing in the field. Assess condition is always the best information to have to when you're basing this information on. If we look at the capital forecast, the annual capital requirements going forward now. When we look at this graphic here, uh, simply because there's so, if we went year over year, it would be a very messy graph. These, this is in ten-year buckets. Um, so when we look at that annual average requirement of thirteen million dollars. It's also good to remember that asset management plans do not, do not consider. The uh, they only consider sustainable funding. So those one-time funding grants you get for infrastructure from the federal government or from the provincial government. That's not a sustainable source of revenue. We do not include in asset management plans. When we talk about sustainable revenue and sustainability. It's about being independent as a municipality to be able to fund your program. So just remember that these numbers are based off sustainable revenue sources only. And the target versus actual reinvestment rates, and simply put, your current reinvestment rate is simply. We look at your sustainable revenue sources and we divide that against your total replacement cost of your asset portfolio in each asset category and each asset category. Your target reinvestment rate is what you actually need. Divided by your replacement cost of your portfolio. So what we're seeing here is you're looking at the blue arrows. Uh, those are the four asset categories they've made significant. Um, um, improvements on as far as inventory goes, uh, replacement costs. And we can see here that for fleet, those, that little, be- the between the the two point three percent and the seven point four three percent. It actually equals about six hundred and ninety four thousand dollars in gap in funding to be able to fund that fleet program and replace everything. As it's stated in your system to date. Um, which is not based off of, it's has some assess condition, but not completely. Uh, if we look at the road network, it's about two point six million dollars underfunded based on the information today. And we can see that your target reinvestment rate should be somewhere around three point four seven percent. If I look at the potable water network, it's uh, you know, what a one point seven million dollar gap annually, which is about a one point eight percent. Uh, target reinvestment rate you're looking at, and then also wastewater network being the lowest, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars and a one point three pro- five percent target reinvestment rate. But now I'm going to put it in comparison um, to some other municipalities when it, when we get into the next graphs, we talked about the financial strategy. So. When we look at these graphs, we've got four asset categories we're fairly confident in. But the all those other asset categories, we still have significant work to do, and that's that work that Mindy was talking about is coming forward in the future. To be able to get to that level where we're, where you're going to be confident in all the information and data that you have. And it goes back to this. So we all know that the numbers aren't perfect yet. So this asset management plan is. This is a snapshot of what to expect in your asset management plan. Once all of the data and information has been confirmed. This is going to be a useful tool, and I say it's a tool, it's not the holy grail, it's not going to tell you what your projects are. It's going to tell you. What you should be doing and what you need. But it's used as a tool to help predict and project or predict what those future costs will be and what, how much money do we need to be able to fund these programs? Uh, if we look at the tax-funded assets, your inner capital requirement is about eighty percent or more. Of of your requirements at ten million dollars. Uh, your total funding available, sustainable funding available. Is just under four million dollars annually, which leaves an annual capital deficit of six point one million dollars. Uh, rate funded assets, uh, three point five million dollars, uh, annual cavity requirements. Total funding available to date based on the sustainability of those, the the funding that we we work with. Is slightly over one million dollars, which leaves another infrastructure deficit of two point five million dollars. And you can see the totals at the bottom. Now, I'm going to tell you this, you're not alone. And I think you're going to see that in the next slides here, because now I'm going to bring up. Um, s- some comparisons. So before I get into this, I want you to. To uh, pay attention to the numbers I'm going to, I'm going to give you, and this is. Public information that come from the asset management plans that we developed for the town of Edson and the town of Devon. Uh, which are neighboring municipalities to yourselves, while somewhat close, uh, Edson being the closest. If we look at the portfolio value of the town of Hinton today, and that's based on the information we have, it's valued at about five and a quarter. Uh, million dollars. If we compare that um, to Edson, for example. Their port value, uh, they, and this is now, mind you, yours is a twenty twenty two AMP. Edson was a twenty eighteen AMP. And Devon's was a twenty nineteen AMP, and then twenty eighteen. Edson had a portfolio value of about five hundred million dollars. Uh, population eight point four thousand at that. Back near that time, I think hitting slightly right around the ten thousand or ten K for population and Devon being six point five uh, thousand in population. And their portfolio value was valued at two hundred and eighty six million dollars. And Edson's. And Devon's significant work updating all the replacement costs on all their assets. So they went through this process. And it was a multi-year process. I think for Edson, we worked with Edson for about five years, doing exactly what Hinton's doing right now. Uh, to get them up to uh, to speed. Uh, the town of Devon, uh, again, another four and a half years, and I still work with them to date, doing little things for them, updating and so on. But if we look at the financial plan, now again, remember it only includes current capital infrastructure. Um, sustainable funding sources. If we were to use this data today, under the tax-funded assets, the average annual tax increase. Every year for the next twenty years would be essentially one point nine percent. Now, think about inflation and what that would mean. We don't use inflation in asset management plans. We base everything on today's current value. If I looked at the tax-funded assets in the A- asset management plans for Edson and Devon, Edson. Their recommendation was for a two point two percent increase on their tax-funded assets, and Devon's was a. Was a four percent increase for tax-funded assets on a twenty-year plan similar to yourselves. For rate-funded water services, we recommended a twenty-year. Now, again, these are recommendations based on the data today, so let's not take that. To budget time and say this is what we have to work on. This is a snapshot. In twenty twenty five, you'll have an asset management plan that you'll have a lot of confidence. But based on the data today, we're looking at a two percent increase, annual increase over twenty years for the town of Hinton. If I look at the water-funded assets for Edson, they're looking at a two point one percent increase, so very similar to yourselves. And for water, rate-funded assets, water for the town of Devon, they were looking at a nine percent increase, annual increase. Over twenty years to be able to fully fund their water network. And there's a lot of things revolving around that. Mainly because most of the infrastructure in Devon was built all at one time. The model town in Canada at the time, right? Um, built on oil and gas. So that is one of the major, major issues around that. And if we look at the rate-funded assets for sanitary services, we were looking at a three point two percent increase annually for the town of Hinton. Whereas if we look at Edson, it's a four point three percent increase to be able to fully fund their sanitary um, program. And also three percent for the town of Devon. So you can see that. In comparison to other municipalities in your area. This isn't too far off, but we do know that there's still more work to be done on the data, and we're going to, we're going to get to that. So this just comes to the conclusion. Um, and the key recommendations here, and I think Mindy already spoke to them earlier, is. You know, continuous refinement of the, of the asset inventory data. And reason being, we rely on. Technology not to do everything for us, to tell us almost everything nowadays. Think of Google Maps. People rely on Google Maps every day to get them to and from work on the fastest route with no roadblocks, get their kids to sports, soccer, hockey and everything else. But it, Google Maps runs on data. And it has to be accurate data and timely data, or else you're not getting the right information. That's no different than an asset management program. So the recommendations here are continue to operationalize AMP findings and citywide software and your asset management software. Continue to validate and refine asset inventory data, specifically right now, stormwater network, we have a good, a a fairly good inventory through the GIF. The stormwater network, but we haven't got it to the point where we are with the sanitary and storm networks. Facilities is lacking a a lot of data. Um, field facilities definitely is a focus, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, developing a data governance framework eventually, including formal condition assessment strategies for all all asset classes. What I mean by formal assessment strategy, we know that people come and go municipalities, there's resource turnover. But if you don't have a formal process in place, it's very subjective and and it's subjective to the person that's coming in, replacing the resource that left. Um, so if you want consistency, you have to build those formal processes, and Mindy spoke to that earlier. And continues, continuous improvement and regular review. Uh, an asset management plan is a living document that should be updated regularly to inform your long-term planning. Um, and with that, I'll open up the floor to any questions anybody has, uh, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir, very much. We'll start with Counselor Robert.
Thank you. Um, so I'm I'm trying to wrap my head around these numbers, and I guess I I look at the infrastructure deficit. Um, table that you have. Uh, and we're showing sort of a shortfall of six point one million for tax-funded assets and two point four million for. For ratepayer assets. But then when I go to the next page, uh, the tax increases required to cover the rate funded. Or higher, uh, that doesn't make mathematical sense, does it?
Well, one thing we have to remember under the tax-funded assets, the only asset categories we've refined to date is the road network, um, and the fleet. Uh, fleet didn't have a lot of changes as far as replacement costs, Costco, the road network did. And now we're going, the next phase is to tackle the other asset classes. So we're talking about. Parks and recreational assets, you do not have a very good inventory of parks, recreational assets, and they do make up. A significant amount of your asset portfolio and replacement costs. Many municipalities are are fronting that out today. Um, there is still work to be done on the rate-funded assets. Like I said, the water treatment plant. And your sanitary, terry treatment plants, those are the two components of your sanitary network that they'll be getting more information on through facilities. Uh, more than likely facility assessments hopefully in the near future. So I guess the the short answer to that is, um, when the twenty twenty five asset management plan. Is refined and presented, you're probably going to see that these numbers are going to change significantly.
And not down.
It, I've seen both ways. I've seen, in some cases, there's, the the deficit has actually decreased. In other cases, for a lot of municipalities, the deficits have increased, not decreased.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Taylor.
Um, perhaps dumb question. Since Edson and Devon are further ahead of us, um, what are they doing in particularly Devon, their uh. With their shortfalls. Increasing their taxes nine and four percent, is that their plan?
No, this, so these are the recommendations. Obviously, the, again. We don't include the one-time uh, infrastructure grants in these asset management plans. So really. These recommendations are a tool to help balance between, okay, how much sustainable revenue do we have? And how much do we think we can look at as far as infrastructure funding goes? And somewhere we have to meet in the middle. And again, these recommendations, they're a tool, they're not the holy grail on what you should be, you know, raising your taxes by. Um, there's also a lot of prioritization that has to be taken into consideration. You know, when we start looking at. Uh, infrastructure projects. Your data in your system is going to allow you to be able to coordinate projects much better going in the future, and Winston touched on this earlier. Where there might be coordinated projects, we noticed that we have good condition or good assessment data on underground infrastructure. Then we look at the road network and we say, well, yeah, this road in particular is in pretty poor condition. Well, we know the public wants that road replaced because it's not the best, but the underground infrastructure is actually not in that bad of shape. But yet you have another project in town where you've done the analysis through your system, and your system's telling you that. The underground is actually not in the best of shape. The road is not in best of the shape. Where do we put that money? Well, my, my bet is you're going to put it towards a project where you're going to coordinate it. Because we all know when you replace a road and you don't look at the underground infrastructure, and then two years down the road, you have a water main break or a major failure. Guess what happens to that road? We rip it back up and we replace the underground infrastructure. So again, it's, it's all about. Wh- what this plant, plan, and asset management program is going to bring the table to you as far as um. Um, value and infor- information that'll help you make those decisions a little bit better.
Thanks.
Good, you're good, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions, Counselor, Counselor Haas?
Just a clarifying question. So. The current state of our infrastructure, the condition in that that graph there, where it's got very poor, poor, fair, good, and very good. Um, so the only, only things that we know for certain, our fleet. And and road network, the rest are all based on just. Age-based, so they could be better, they could be worse. We don't really know at this time. Is that correct?
That is right. And the, when I say age-based condition, uh, assess condition is always better. Because we all know that there's assets out there in in your portfolio. That are actually performing really well, but we didn't capture the data or the assessment and put it in the system. So the system really is. So the system really is just calculating it based on your estimated useful life of the asset in the in-service state, which then tells you how much consumed life of the asset. How much of life the asset is consumed. But in some cases, those assets have fully consumed, but they're performing just fine. So again, this ties back into when we look at the tax, the recommended increases in tax on an annual basis. When you look at what we're basing it off of, it's not the most accurate. We have a good inventory for a lot of these assets, but we don't have the assessments or the condition around that to say confidently that those numbers are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Counselor Taylor.
Maybe this is an administration thing. With some of these things getting away from age-based to assessed, this, all this camera work that we're paying for, is that, what percentage of that is that going to change that number from? That we're going to know that the stormwater potable wastewater system is going to move from age-based to say assessed? Because we've been doing the camera work, and is that going to significantly alter those numbers? Maybe thirty percent or forty or fifty or?
I, I couldn't speak to that specifically. Winston and your staff know your infrastructure a little bit better than me. I haven't, I have, hadn't had the opportunity to see any of your assessments. So, you know, maybe Winston, maybe you can comment on that question, please.
I'm sure that I've checked through the rest of council, but it will improve and give us more data that is real in terms of what the CCTV has showed us. We also know of our pipe breaks on water mains and collapses, how many we do pay here. So when we put that through the cameras, you'll be able to determine exactly what the nature of your replacement is. And we talked offline, the council of data about innovative approaches. That will help us to say where innovative approach will work. What I mean by innovative approach for the rest of council is something as slip lining a water main is so line, a stormwater line, other than having an exclusive approach to break up the road. Nobody will know we fixed it. So that gives you an extra fifteen years potentially. So Counselor Taylor, we should see at least a thirty percent improvement to data that we have, all these underground services. To the sixty thousand that you spent today and continuing like into next year.
And then, may I follow?
Go ahead, sir.
And that innovative approach, like lining the pipes that we were talking about before, will save us costs. Because every single, every single pipe project that I saw from last capital budget consisted of taking the old pipe out and putting a new pipe in. Well, that's not what Europe's been doing for decades and it's not what Evan is doing, that's not what Victoria is doing in a lot of their pipes. You can say forty percent by doing that. So is that technology that we're going to look at?
Madam Chair, I mean, absolutely, it's constant, Taylor. In fact, we've already looked at it, the time you and I connected, and you came back with that good ideas. We already looked at which pipes can send to sewer, be maintained through a slip lining. I know the technology is improving because of the aggressiveness of the various agents that are reacting those pipes. Stormwater is a good candidate for that. Waterman is the best candidate for that, for his living. What I'm, what I am seeing based on the asset management is that some of our pipes and our water master plants are actually maybe upgrading and increasing diameter because some of them is under capacity. So that's where that will not work for us, unfortunately. Yes, we can do pipelines, as they call it, to basically punch the pipe through the soil and you do directional drilling. There's that part two, and that should, it's not just that it costs less, but it's less interruption to businesses. And you'll see a business case come forward like that in the budget process this year.
Exciting. I mean, seriously.
Good, you're good, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris or administration? And hearing and seeing, Chris, thank you so much for your presentation today.
Thank you very much for everyone's attention, and they're all great questions, and I get these questions all the time, but progress is happening. You're doing great.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation. Now, this, it doesn't look like C A O then action is required on this report.
Through the chair, I don't believe so.
Thank you. So anything else, counsel, on this? Nothing. Okay, we're going to carry on to our financial reporting ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And that is page one hundred and fourteen on the report. On our agenda.
Next, Gerald, turn it over to the.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of committee. I have before you the financial report ending the third quarter, so the third year of twenty twenty-two. I will preface this as a new format for a report is being built as we go over this. It just wasn't quite getting to be presented at this time. So I do understand that this one is quite brief. I'm pleased to indicate that we anticipate being at about eight percent collection rate for our twenty twenty-two trans levy. That does put us within the ten percent municipal sustainability indicator that Alberta Municipal Affairs has as one of their key targets. Although we know, continue to strive, staff is working very hard at getting the collections going on those. Our, some of our revenue items were a little bit higher than budgeted, particularly franchise fees before council before. The electrical franchise fee had been averaging about a hundred and ten thousand dollars per month, which is on par for last year. Where we're seeing the unanticipated increase was at, was estimated about thirty-three thousand dollars a month. And we're receiving closer to forty-four thousand dollars a month. As well as our investment income, we've been working diligently to capitalize on the higher interest rates. So that's showing us over on that line. Drawing your attention to the government transfers for operating line, it looks like we're significantly under budget. That is addressed on the first page, where there's a number of grants and other opportunities that we receive more towards the final quarter of the year. The biggest one being our revenue sharing with Yellowhead County, which is approximately, it was budgeted last year at two point one million. I have a call into them to see if there's an indication of more actual for this year. I just haven't received an answer back. So we'll see us able to meet our targets on that much better as we go towards the end of the year. Salaries, wages and benefits anticipate to definitely be within the budgeted amount. Still need to do some work on determining the vacant positions and the amounts that were under the budget. Sorry, and also under contracted services, it looks like we have underutilized that line, but wanting to bring to committee's attention that we do have two quarters of the R C N P contract to pay, which will be approximately one point one million dollars. So that's yet to go out. We also have our monthly contract payment to Aqua Terra, so another hundred and thirty thousand, as well as our contract services for some of our I T services. Requisitions also come out in the final quarter, the last payment of it. So that will again bring that lineup, so it's not appearing to be underutilized. With that, if you have any questions from committee?
I do have a quick question. So the forty-three thousand that we're getting from an ad code, that's about fourteen point six percent. But we're currently at the franchise fee. Correct. And then in January, it dropped to twelve percent. We'll see a lot from.
Yes, we'll get their budget numbers for twenty twenty-three based on the new rate that this approved by council.
All right. Council. And Counselor Taylor.
As she's new to me. So this means we're not in a surplus deficit position? I'm not quite sure. Are we spending more than where, is the revenue higher than? Where do we, where are we going to sit at the end of the year revenue from your projection right now?
Through the chair to Counselor Taylor. I'm, I'm anticipating and forecasting revenues to be slightly under what we had budgeted. A little bit of that I still have to look into on the utilities and waste management. I haven't had a chance to go through and analyze all those accounts to see where we're coming in on those ones. And expense-wise, we are on track to be within budget. And I anticipate being able to put forward the three million dollars in reserves that was council's preference at the time that the twenty twenty-two budget was signed up. So we're in good shape.
So at the end of the year, what will the revenues be and what will the expenses be?
I'm forecasting the revenues to be at twenty-eight million four hundred thousand. And we had budgeted for external revenues to come in at twenty-eight million eight hundred thousand. So a little bit more analysis will have to be done to see exactly where those shortfalls are coming. And that is in progress. For our expenses, budgeted expenses was done at around thirty-five million. And I have projected right now to be at thirty-two million without including the three million dollars to transfer to reserves.
And C A O?
Sure, if I may, the one thing I will add to that is, I notice here that the amortization of your tangible capital assets is including your expenses. Common municipal practice, it's not an expense that you necessarily pay out on a yearly basis, but it's more of a, in my experience, an audit or an accounting function to track the degradation of your assets. So it's not necessarily an expense that's paid. That may be something that we want to look at if that's council direction on whether we actually budget for our amortization.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, any further questions? And I certainly would accept a direction right now.
I move that we accept the report.
Okay.
Think that's the way it goes.
So without the option one.
Yeah.
Okay, counsel, we do have a direction on the floor.
No.
So our direction is that committee accepts the third quarter twenty twenty-two operating budget, revenue, expense report for information. All those in favor? And I cannot, and yes, I'm not carried. Thank you, thank you very much. Counselor, any other questions for this topic? I'm seeing and hearing none. We'll move on to five point three, and that would be Counselor Taylor.
That's the service level review.
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to discuss yours. Or this, or?
If I may, Chair, I believe that we have a delegation that will be attending to present the service level document to help facilitate our discussion. I also believe that we'll have another one of the consultants attending by Zoom. And so if that's, if you're okay with that, I think we'll invite, I believe it's Doug, correct? Doug to the floor and he can provide the findings, yes, I.
Okay, so that's. Sorry, sorry.
If I may.
Certainly, sir.
I didn't catch this, but we do have the information item of the budget in in six point one. I don't see that lasting as long as what that is. And given the staff member here, might I suggest we flip five point three to after six point one? My apologies for not, not stating that during our acceptance of the agenda, but I don't know what the rest of council feels like. Kind of thinking.
Go ahead, sir.
I think we have two consultants that'll be waiting, but well, this one, but is that going to be a short talk?
Through the chair, I don't believe that it'll, it'll take a long time. It's simply a preparation title.
Okay. Okay, so I may have misunderstood this at the beginning of the year. So right now, we're going to carry on with the information items, and that would be the budget from one to three, survey results up where we are right now. Go ahead, sir.
You know, through the chair, I believe Counselor Hawes, Hawes's point was just that we could do six point one before we did five point three. Just for our staff member to to be able to provide the report and go on.
Yeah. So without the, a vote of council to make that amendment to the agenda? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
So I'd like to move that we, we replace, I guess, to move the service level discussions after the budget twenty twenty-three public survey results. On the chair.
Certainly. And all those in favor? And that's carried.
Go ahead, Madam Chair, we have, if you should, dragging like this to facilitate a survey on behalf of the town and council, which is, and I'd invite her to see to present to you.
Okay, thank you very much. You sure? Totally provided that after you.
Excellent. So you have before you today the results of the budget twenty twenty-three public, public survey. And the town of Hinton conducted stakeholder engagement by a survey from September fourteenth to October twelfth, as directed by committee at the thirteen, the thirty of the whole meeting. It was a much more comprehensive survey than we have had in previous years. And in my opinion, it was a very successful survey. We had a record amount of responses, five hundred and three responses with a seventy-two percent completion rate, which I'm very, very happy with. You have, you have the full report with you in the agenda today. You can see that we split up the survey this year with priorities, taxpayer priorities for the budget next year. And then split it up into department or how people would like. How would, how people would like public money to spend next year. You have any questions?
Thank you very much, counsel. Any questions for you, Sean? And seeing none, and.
Sorry, it's not on the, on the survey itself. I, I do agree it was a lot more comprehensive. I guess the question is, is there a plan to also gather any feedback from this year's survey that we can then use to build next year's survey? You know, because I think there was some places that that I found some people that I spoke to somewhat a little bit confused, some of the, the, just on the questions, the direction, it was, and, and, and. So I, I just curious, is there going to be a process of that, you know, in the next two, three weeks have just, you know, opportunity for people to to share some of their thoughts on it? Is that in the plans or?
Um, we had some comments regarding the questions on the survey in the comments on the survey itself. And on our Facebook posts and things like that. We certainly can reach out for further feedback, so we can improve the survey for next year again, because we just want to make it better.
Yeah, I think it's just an opportunity to potentially improve. I think it improved a lot from previous years, but yeah, that feedback. So I'm not directing anything, I just was curious if that was in the process and plans, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me move that committee accept the budget twenty twenty-three public survey result for information. If I may speak to it briefly, yeah, great data for council to use in the coming months for the budget. About over five hundred people is great, so fantastic work, looking forward to utilizing this, and thanks so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Counsel, we do have a direction on the floor, any discussion, comments? And I shall call the question. The committee accept this report for information, all those in favor? And that is carried, and there are. Okay. But thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
My only suggestion for improvement would be to come to council more than one day before we're going to do the survey, so we could actually make changes to it. Because I had some ideas told that I couldn't do it because the survey is going on the next day. We might make it more of council's survey if we were able to do that in advance.
And if I may speak to that, we actually would like to do the survey earlier in the budget process next year as well. So that the results from the survey can help administration shape their budgets before they come to council. So we will be reviewing the whole budget survey process for next year as well.
Perfect, thank you very much. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So, so that's reaching, I know it was not good, but six point one, I had a five point four. We're dealing with five point two right now. Yes, and I did not write down the introduction of this, so. Introduce about.
I'm good, thank you.
Sure, um, you can resurface all over the floor.
And that's what Dr. Taylor is.
More drug witch.
Yes, it is already a close session item, but there was, there's an aspect of this report that should be discussed in session, so that's why we're having to open.
Right, and but he has a portion that he wants to speak to on in the absorption.
And no, I don't believe that his his point was that uh this report, as it's prepared and uh as you see it today, is it's just a discussion that was more appropriate in an open setting, but.
Most for the ace. Yes, sir. Oh, Counselor McGinn, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But so before we begin referencing that document, we are, we are clear and free to reference any of the sixty two pages uh in the uh open part of council here.
Uh, through the chairs or the rest of council, yeah, I, when I looked through the board, I didn't see anything that would fit nicely within uh the exemptions to report. I think that if council wishes to discuss publicly, um, then we certainly can.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Hawes?
So the only one thing that I'm a little concerned about is originally this was to be enclosed, which means the public has not received this document prior to the meeting. Um, so is administration uh prepared to get this out onto the website uh ASAP as in tomorrow? Because nobody's been able to look at it but us. We're typically be part of the package.
Uh, thank you. Uh, through Deputy Rees, the rest of council, yes, we will be making sure that this document is public as soon as possible. Thank you.
So any other questions before we begin? Okay, administration. From this one review.
Thank you. Uh, through the Deputy Rees, the rest of the council, um I will turn this over to our consultants. Uh, Doug and uh Doug, if he was going to attend, he is, but I don't see him here just yet. Jim, I don't know if uh she's in the waiting room.
Yeah.
You did.
Madam Chair, really old.
Counselor McGinn.
Counselor McGinn.
Well, I'm just wondering, I have some comments that I don't even know if necessarily there are questions for Doug yet. I'm gauging how the remainder of council feels on a couple of things. So if we're okay to begin, I I'm happy to start out. I, again, I I don't know what the will of the chair or council is.
Go ahead.
Well, I don't know about the rest of the council. I'm not sure what uh our administration set up, but I mean, I'm sure Doug has some some comments to make prior to uh potentially, and then I would see, you know, proceeding after that with questions uh more so. Um, that's my, that's my preference anyway.
Yeah, and as Chair, I would prefer to get an opening statement from administration and our our delegation before we do questions. And we, Doug is here. Hello, Doug.
Hi there.
Doug. Squat to me.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, members of committee and staff, uh, thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure to be here back in Tinton. And uh looking forward to presenting our report to you on the service level review. Uh, thanks to council for their cooperation in this project and uh your bait in having TSI compete this project after you had a successful strategic planning session with TSI. Also, a really big thanks to interim CEO Hamlin, who was super in this whole process. He responded to our many, many requests very quickly, very efficiently. He provided his staff to respond quickly so we could keep this process moving and and get the report to you as soon as possible. So, uh, many thanks to Mr. Hammond for that. Also, really, uh, some special thanks to HR manager Nikki Aho. She was also very instrumental in getting a lot of information to us on the HR side. Um, some updates on the previous reports it uh council saw from MMP, some sort of some of the organizational issues, and then also on some updates of where that report was at, and also updates on the uh infrastructure services. Um, reviews, culture, review, report that was done in January twenty one, and where that was, and so uh it was very, she was very instrumental in giving us some very detailed information on that. So that we uh will look at moving forward here. Congratulations to your new CEO. Jordan Panasiak, um, we're hoping that this report will help you and council move forward and set him and and council up for success and making town a better place. So I'll just do an overview of the report, hit a few of the highlights, and uh Doug will jump in if you ever, if I ever miss something. And then we'll just open it up for questions and have a good discussion at that point. Um, so first off, we get to an executive summary. And uh a typical executive summary, fifty one recommendations to improve effectiveness, efficiency, and responsiveness in service delivery. And uh there's a deliverable summary, and then you did a SWOT analysis that shows your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats based on our research. Section three, which is uh page seven on your document, is a listing of all fifty one recommendations. And divided into four sections. So we've got one section that's related more to council and governance. Then we got a section on staff and organization, and so see a lot of that is sort of HR kind of related. Then there'll be a section, third section is on operations, you know, what's actually happening in the field. And uh some thoughts on that. And then the final section is on budget and finance, and you know what we do? Entire section just on budget and finance because your budget is one of your most important planning documents for the town. And so we we uh really put finance as a separate category all by itself. Section four, uh the background talks to stakeholder engagement. And uh we did a survey of staff. And we had fifty eight responses, which we were happy with. That's an impressive number. And we did interviews with all of council and numerous staff, total of thirty one there, which again was very good. So that included, like I say, all of council, uh all the senior management, and then there was quite a few just regular uh roots on the ground staff who contacted us and wanted to have an interview, and so we did interviews with them as well. Then we have a uh in, within there towards the end, we got the uh, you know, what we heard summary of of the summer of the surveys and the interviews. Much of it relates to council administration interactions, which in a municipality is always a challenge. Uh, the significance of staff turnover in the last few years. Um, and yet we're, we still found that there is many, many dedicated staff here at the town that like working here and they want to keep working there. Section five on page thirteen talks about council and CAO procedures. So there's some background there just on the role of council, the role of the CAO, some summary information, some highlights of significant bylaws that council should be aware of. We got into uh, then we have the what we heard section. So this is just what people told us, what um through our interviews, through the surveys, and we summarized that. And uh a couple significant things there that we noticed is the new strategic plan was um was very good. They really liked how their specific measurable goals. Um, optimism with a new CAO coming into work is really happy with the interim CAO, and he seemed to really turn the place around a bit and and get some stable footing on on the on a staffing perspective. Noted uh a number of comments about lack of tax increases uh over the previous years and how um it's hard for staff to make decisions on what to what can reduce when council doesn't provide a direction on how do we do services, because if we don't have tax and revenue increases, how do you keep doing things when inflation and salary increases um take up some of that revenue? Then we get into the analysis section. So typically we'll do a what we heard section, then we'll do an analysis, and then following each analysis, there'll be uh recommendations come out of it. So analysis things we heard, um, it's what we heard.
Sixteen, sixteen, thank you.
We go. Okay. Um, so analysis, uh, you know, we take the things we heard, we take the information we got from the surveys, the interviews, the information we glean from the various policies and bylaws that we read, the procedures, um what's happening in best municipal governance practice about there, compare the recommendations and thoughts to what other municipalities are doing, and how that all fits in with the services within the town of Kenton. So generally, we'll write up in the analysis, we'll write a paragraph or two about uh a topic, and then once that sort of analysis or discussion is done, we'll we'll notch in the uh the recommendations so you can tie why we, why we uh, how we, how we analyze the thinking there to reach that conclusion of what the recommendation is. One thing we did note is there were not a lot of um service level policies at the town here that specifically um show services, and so um we would say there's about forty public services that are, that are the the public directly benefits from those that could easily, you could easily have policies written up on those topics as a starting point. We call those outward facing policies. Um, and so in appendix three, there's, there is a a graphic we were giving from Parks, Recreation and Culture of the Level Service Guideline. At the very top of that, it has ten service levels and there's where you could start from in terms of of making uh service level policies. Um, as council moves through the whole process of creating policies, each council, through their terms, should review all their policies. They should be looking at their policies, their service levels. They should be looking at their bylaws so that you know this is what you want your talent to look like, your talent to be doing.
Doug, will you accept questions throughout your presentation? Or do you want to wait till the end?
Um, I would sort of prefer to wait till the end, if you can remember it, and then we'll just do it all at the end. I won't take a lot of time to do this, so. Okay, so just uh this in and through here, recommendation six, seven, eight. Um, I do want to highlight those as being very important given that we need to have a new CAO in the chair. So those are are, uh, I think, are pretty good priority for uh council for what that. Uh, moving on to page twenty two, staff and organization section. Uh, we've already mentioned a little bit about staff turnover being significant, especially in the CAO position. And that had a large impact in your organization to the staff and just not having that good leadership there to keep the ship moving forward. Significance of having vacant positions came through loud and clear, and you start getting a trickle down effect where if a position is vacant, then someone has to pick up the slack for that vacant position, get what needs to get done, done, and then some of the lower priority stuff doesn't get done, and it just sort of trickles down and trickles down, and and eventually a lot of things aren't getting done. So we did find that there was a lot of staff vacancies and they weren't getting filled as quickly as as one would like. And again, all and also within staffing, we found training became a big issue. Uh, there's been cutbacks in training budgets we heard. There's been, uh, we have new staff, so those new staff need to be trained. We found a significant gap in the supervisor and manager staff needing some leadership training on how to actually lead their staff and work with them as opposed to technical training on how to do your tasks of your job. So there's sort of two sides to the to the training equation. Um, health safety also came up quite frequently as an issue. There seems to be some areas where it's lagging, and uh again, we've seen that in previous reports as well. It's made great, great progress in the last few years, but still some work to be done. Getting on to section seven, operations. Um, we talked about the strategic plan, and we know recently that council approved the tactical plan, so staff has some some now some tasks that they're going to do to meet council's strategic plan, and that's really good. We also think there'd be a good idea for uh the next stage is to have department plans, like business plans. Again, it ties into the tactical plan, it ties into the strategic plan. And then from that, each staff member would have some personal goals, some key performance indicators in their annual performance review, which they would be held accountable for, which again leads into the department plan, leads up to the tactical plan, leads up to accomplishing council's strategic plan. Um, you just had a budget report we heard uh and discovered the there was significant training needed in the new software for the budgeting. It's not just an Excel spreadsheet anymore. There's a little more to it, and there's huge advantages to to learning the proper way to use the new budget software, I believe it's called analytics, and it's not, it's I guess, like a spreadsheet on steroids, is how I heard those kinds of things described. And it really helps out staff and and even council see where your budget is. And uh not just in the budgeting process, but starting January first and tracking where your budget expenses are. We looked at mill rates and saw minimal assessment growth in the last four years, four percent over four years. And so only four hundred thousand dollars in the four years, yet inflation, union wages, you're seeing an increase in costs of of two to four percent annually. So as I mentioned, how do you have cost increasing if your revenue stays flat? Something has to give. I got ahead of myself. I'm sort of in the budget section, so I'm just gonna back up to the operations section a bit here.
What page, Doug?
Um, I'm on page twenty nine, and I'll back up a bit. Um, talk about budgets. Um, we're thinking perhaps look at solid waste. You know, can you do solid waste on a biweekly basis instead of every week? And then could you do curbside recycling at every other week? That's an option that we heard as well, and but there are municipalities giving that. Um, yeah, just ideas for a council to look at as a different level of service. Yeah, on page uh thirty one, there's a uh two paragraphs about about the staff spending time sweeping highly sixteen. And I know you, you, counsel, just approved a new street sweeper, and we did a lot of research on this and sure is why town staff are spend spending time maintaining a provincial highway when blue bridge or provincial highway through town is the province's responsibility. You want to do it, that's again a service level you can decide. But you need to be talking to the province and getting them ready to check for you. That's their highway, they should be paying for it, or they should be doing it, would be the best option, and that's what we recommended there. Um, then there's a section uh. Then there's a section, uh, sort of a subsection within there. I was also heard page thirty-two talks about fire services and and. Community peace officers and. Some idea, they're just a, they need to tighten up their service levels, make sure they know what they're doing and make sure their. Um, documentation matches what the province requires. All the C P Os have significant uh. Reporting requirements for the province and so they need to make sure that that's all of the data kept. Uh, in order with no proper signatures, et cetera. So I get to section eight, the budget and finance on page thirty-five. Um, we talked about the budget uh process and looking at the budget process uh. Starting in June and being concluded by by December before Christmas. That's how long proper budgeting process takes. And then in January, you would then use this budget software to carry on watching your expenditures and seeing how it accumulates over the year. Uh, talk about the flat mill rate, four percent union wages and other wages going up. And then on. Table. Table six on page thirty-nine. Those are mill weights of Hinton compared to four other municipalities. And you have room to add to those and still be under them if that's something for you, but you know, look at Coldale. Um, ten point eight residential assessment, so. There's options there for for council to move up on the mill rate and bring in some more income to change your levels of service. Table five, just above that is very significant that over four years, again, you only see. Your tax revenue, your budgeted tax revenue has only increased four hundred thousand dollars. Moving down to. Page forty, talking about the water supply. We all know you get your water through the mill. And what if that mill closes tomorrow? Heard that some of these industries, they just close very quickly because their bosses are in another part of the world and make decisions that. May not take it on into account, so. We really agree there's a risk there and. And uh you start looking at some way to mitigate that risk, looking at having your own. Um, water sources or some sort of agreement in place at the mill so that if they shut down, you still have water for the town. It's a long process. There's grants out there for this kind of thing. Same thing for water meters. Water meters are very common in the province. It's rare that municipalities don't have water meters anymore. And there are grants for that, but you don't typically apply for granted to get it that first year. You sort of have to get in line and you have to apply. And then you have to apply again, you'll work with the the various. Uh, staff at the department and they'll give you hints on how to do it and eventually you get up the priority list and eventually you get the grant to. Get the project uh underway that you would like. And so the best time to work on that is now and starting looking to eliminate that risk and the potential liability. Section nine on page forty-two is a conclusion. Um, to summarize what we had and we are recommending that this report be um. Be public. And it is obviously now, but uh we were thinking this was a closed session, but certainly it should be public, the public should be able to see this. There's nothing. Nothing confidential in this report. And then council needs to direct your C O. To look at it and come back with a tactical plan on how to implement it, how, what timelines. What they think the priorities are and you work with your C O on what those priorities are and timelines and see where it goes. It's not going to happen like next week or next month. This this could take many years to implement the recommendation, but. You need to make sure council needs to direct the C O to do something and he needs to bring that tactical plan back. And then council needs to follow up on that on a regular basis, say, how are you doing on that? Where are we getting on this? And you may find some of these recommendations are, you know what? That's not what you want to do. That's your business. Um. And your C O may find, oh, this is easy. We can fix this tomorrow. It's done, eh? And uh, you know, we come in, we do a snapshot in time, so there's probably lots of other stuff going on. You know, you think the duck's swimming in the water, right? And we can't see it all, so uh with your new C O here and. A whole bunch of new staff in the managerial level. And it is good potential here to uh get the ground running and get some of this stuff done. Section ten on uh starts on page forty-four and that's just a bunch of appendices. Provides uh background information. Uh, the sample service level policy there and in the very end is a. Again, the list of recommendations. So if you just want to rip those two pages off and pin them on the wall. And check them off as you go. There's your recommendation list. Nice and easy to find and nice and easy for anybody to see. And then you can go back into the report to find where those recommendations are and what we talked about. And so that's opening statements from that. I'll uh open it up. Doug, do you have any other comments you want to add at this time?
I have nothing to add at this time, Doug. Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, council. Um, what questions do we have for? Our speaker. And I do have, we're going to start with that, council a little bit.
Thank you. Um, I guess from my perspective, when I heard service level review. I'm surprised at the report, actually. I thought that when I heard service level review is that we were going to get sort of a. A review of where we were spending money. Um, now there's a bunch of interesting stuff in here. But this isn't, I mean, from my perspective, what I expected, maybe I should ask more, maybe I should have asked more questions, but I mean. Recommendations to, you know, hire more people in H R and charge more taxes because we're lower than Coldale. It it's just not, this isn't what I was expecting. I thought that we were going to benchmark. Some, some um service level items. That, because we have a discussion all the time. They go, yeah, that's cool. You could do that, but it's going to impact service levels without ever having a discussion of what that means. I was expecting some definition of what that was going to mean in this report. So I I'm actually, um, and this is just a, just a comment and I'm interested in the input of others, but it's. It's kind of what I expected and this isn't.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Council house.
Um, to build off that, and I'm not, I think part of it is, and what I'm hearing to clarify. Because I I was of of the same impression of the service level, but. Reading between the line or maybe not reading two lines, but what I'm gathering is, and I'm going to go back to your comment on the forty services you talked about. Um. My guess is, is that if there would be a policy. Then we would have had that information, but what I'm hearing is, is we have no policies on our services. We have forty services, but there's no clear policy on. You know, how, how, when do we mow the grass? When do we? And if they are there, they're very outdated. They're very old. Is that? Is that fair to say? Based on what I read in the report?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, I would say what it is, is. You as a council don't really know what your service levels are.
Right.
Staff do, they're doing stuff out there. They're, they're plowing the snow, they're sweeping the streets, they're mowing the grass, so they know what their standards are now. So all they have to do is those forty-ish topics there, they need to write that down and. And like start really in a summary form, right? Don't try and make it perfect. Don't try and get into all this detail, just get something down. Here's how we mow the grass. Here's why we mow the grass. Is it, is it? A certain standard in a ballpark? Is it a certain standard in a community park? Is it a different standard in a neighborhood park? What about the green space in front of the tourist information center? They already know that, they're already doing it. And to go back and try and figure out how many dollars and cents it costs for each little thing. Maybe it's already in the line items of their budgets. I don't know, but. Council doesn't really need to know. You just want to know. What are your standards? Like, do you want? The grass cut. Point a week or do you want to cut? Every two weeks. That's sort of what you need to go and then staff would adjust to that. So those are sort of the levels of service and you'll see the one, the example policy, it does that on those various parks.
So if I may follow up, so to go back to, that's why. If, if we would have, if we would have not in someone's head, but written on paper in a policy. You would have, when you did this service level review, discovered that and probably put this in there. This is your, your policy on these certain services, but. I'm hearing we don't have that, so we need to take a step back and create those policies so that we set them. Uh, what we were, you, what, because that's what I also thought the same thing. But we obviously don't have those in place. So that we can make those decisions at this time because it's in someone's head.
Yeah, through the church, that is correct. And there, there's a lot of municipalities don't have that kind of detail. They'll have, they'll have like, like a. A parks maintenance policy or they'll have a snow maintenance policy, because all the things that people see, right? But there's still a whole bunch of other policies out there and you're elected to represent what the people want. So you have to make sure. You know what that is and you do that through a policy. Do you have anything further to add on that, Doug?
To you, Madam Chair. Um, the other thing I would say is like, a good example is your trail maintenance. Quite often it is. Uh, resident complaint response that determines what you're going to do. So how do you benchmark that against another community? Now, in the past, I don't think your staff would have been able to tell you what they spent on a particular service. And I know I I appreciate the question where you want to know how much you spent on each service. In the past, I don't think that it staff would have been able to give you that information. And I think hopeful with your new uh director of corporate services there, you will have this information going forward when you do your budget.
Yeah, I have a. Thank you, Doug. Just have to add before, we'll circle back to you. I'm not going to echo what Council of Berishy, Council of House have said. I agree with. What has really come out to me in this meeting is we don't have policies. We don't. And I think we desperately need them. And I'm going to ask you one more thing, and I hope I'm not the only one wondering what this is. An outward facing service. Would that be? What?
Okay, those are the the services the public actually, I guess, what they actually get a benefit from. So there are the snow piling, the street cleaning, um, the water, the water that comes out of their cap. The aquatic center, you know, all that kind of what they actually get. So the internal services are. The budget and finance people. Like, the public doesn't really see that or get a benefit from it, but it makes. This organization function. Uh, all your H R staff, that's called internal facing because. The public aren't involved in that. And they ultimately get the result because H R hires staff, which then that's that will do the things out of the field. Which is the outward facing service, but inward facing is all internal to the corporation. So, yeah, like I said, all the budget and finance people. Um, H R. Uh. Health and safety, so we get health and safety, keeps your staff safe and in compliance with laws. But the people out there don't directly benefit from it. Obviously, they do benefit because the people are safe, so they get the job done. So that's the difference between outward facing and inward facing.
You know, it was nervous to me when you said, um. Um. This is how we do it because the guy's got it in his head. This is how we've done it for how many years? Well, if our guy goes away. And another guy comes in, wants to do it a different way. That just doesn't sit right with me, sir. A hard copy of policy that when I say. What is our service level? On that tip where I don't know.
Correct.
So, thank you, sir. And um, we have Ms. Uh, Councilor McGowan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, um, my first question, uh, I guess I could reference page forty-seven of sixty-two on the report. And this is an infographic, it is blue. Uh, and it tags along with a paragraph that's uh entitled stakeholder consultations. So the middle circle is comprehensive stakeholder consultation surrounded by five bubbles. C O supervisors, councils, senior admin, department heads. Uh, the one, if we're doing a service level review. Uh, the one, the one title in there that I I see is missing. I noticed it was mentioned at the beginning of the port uh report, but not since. Uh, frontline staff. Uh, can we, can we speak to that, please?
So page forty-seven, was that, that the graphic?
Yeah.
Okay, primarily, these are the people we did talk to, the supervisors, the senior admin, council department heads, the C O. And uh, but we did open it up through the survey and we got input, so maybe there should be a little circle in there for the frontline staff because we did. Uh, through the survey, that was mostly um. The frontline staff that responded, at least half of them would have been frontline staff would respond. That's why we do the survey is because. They don't want to come in and talk to the consultants typically. They're happy doing an anonymous survey, so that was the frontline staff. So, yeah, maybe we should have put a a dot in there that. Recognize that the frontline staff did have some input into this. They have opportunity to put into it. Every one of them that contacted us. Either directly or through Michelle in our office and said, I want an interview. They got an interview. Um, we did a bunch of in-person interviews when Doug and I were here in August, but there was many, many other. Either Zoom interviews or just phone conversations that happened. It all depended on, on the staff member, whether they could do Zoom or where they were at. And uh, so we did do them. So uh, to the council's question, yes, we did include them and perhaps we should have been included that thought on the circle.
Sorry, can I just get clarification, Madam Chair, on that?
Go ahead, please.
So how many interviews were done with frontline staff members?
I don't have that number in front of me. I'd have to get that for you, to break that all for you.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, if I can go back in queue, please?
Yes, okay, um, Councilor House.
Yeah, and I don't want to, I think some of this, and I I appreciate you saying a snapshot, because I think when we look back. To when this began, there was a snapshot of some, a lot has happened. In, in both administratively and in other practices and processes and stuff since that's been done. So, you know, I am happy to see that some of the recommendations that are in here. Uh, are things that we're currently working on, which are indicated, because one of the things that came up in it is staff training and. It's in our tactical plan from our strategic plan, you know, where that staff training and how it fits into. Building that efficiency and things like that. Um, I do appreciate and and I think that it's, it's. One of those matters that I think. When it comes to the budget, when it comes to to cutting things, unfortunately, that is what seems to be the go-to. We'll keep the services as they are, but. You know, we we cut in that in the, but I appreciate hearing that so that when we are discussing this in. In our budget, uh, current, you know, what's coming up is, is where does training fit into all of this? Um, and it's not just, you know, try to muddle through it because that's, that's going to be a big part of, you know, and we say that finances is a, is a huge part. So I guess it's just more of a comment that, you know, there was some good things that I I feel that did come from this. And I think that our staff looking at it will see that some of those movements have been made, but um. You know, I guess it's now the question of is having that conversation, as you said, with our C E O was where do we go from here? So. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilor McGowan.
Actually, Madam Chair, I'll go to the bottom of the queue, please. I'm still trying to figure out an appropriate way to formulate a question. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I I did have some of the same uh thoughts as Council of Berish. Um, and perhaps that's work that our administration, this council is going to do, uh, looking at the policies and seeing which ones to prioritize that are outdated. But then. I I just want to, what, one of the recommendations, number forty. That the community peace officer program brings forward a budgeted service to add. Uh, a C P O, uh, would, would it be fair to use the same process as all the other policies and and for council to look? At the service level, which would be uh, doing traffic control, et cetera. So. I I just want to make sure that. The message is to look at all of our policies, assess the service level. And then decide on these recommendations, which one happens to be already done. Any specific reason why the C P O is kind of pulled out of there, let's not look at the service level. And do that, uh, any, any comment on that for us to better understand uh whether we implement that or not?
Uh, through the chair, I I do to the committee, I guess the comment is. There were three C P Os here. There were three C P Os here for a number of years. We heard lots of comments and we read many bylaws about. Uh, enforcement, things you wanted enforced. We saw concerns about, um. Having C P Os available evenings and weekends, and when you only have one or two, that makes it very hard. And so that's why we're saying you need a third one. If you look at the, the comparables in the appendix. You are on the lower end. There are some municipalities have significantly more C P Os than you do. Uh, maybe you would want a bylaw officer instead of a C P O. Again, that's, again, that's a very good comment. That's a level of service, right? What, what services do you want your C P Os to do? And as such, then what level of certification do you want? A C P O or a bylaw officer? Do you want a, an animal control officer? I don't know, you tried contracting and that didn't really work out too well. But again, you have to think about people. And so you think, oh, two C P Os is enough. Well, yeah, but they have training. They have overtime, they have sick days, they have holidays. I mean, you sort of put that all together and you want them working weekends and evenings. And you gotta go there during the day as well. Do you want them just reacting to complaints? Or do you want them to start being proactive in terms of going around looking for. illegally parked cars or dogs running at large or snow that isn't getting shown. We want them to be more, um. Community minded and be proactive. So again, that's your, your, your question was about the services. Yeah, you need to look at your services. But when we looked at everything we heard and read about, you need a third C P O. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Counselor McGowan, um, are you ready to?
Um, not really, but I'm gonna say it anyway, Madam Chair. I, I have to say. I've, I've worked really hard and I know many of my fellow counselors have on many, maintaining some, some good and productive relationships with our staff. I was thoroughly disappointed and, and even a touch angry when I went through the what we heard section. Near the top of the report. I thought a lot of the what we heard was dated at best. And there was a large focus on potentially purgative information that wasn't either accurate. Or certainly reached back to time so far that it was, it was just out of date. So for myself as a counselor who really works hard to maintain some good relationships with our staff. Uh, I was upset by that and I was disappointed that as much of it as it did, found its way into a service level report. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Counselor House.
Um, so I, just a couple of questions, but if, if you mind, I think that. I had similar as Counselor McGoon, but I also, um. This service level review, in essence, was the first time that the staff had an opportunity. To voice some of their concerns as much as they might be dated and we've made some strides. I'm, I'm, you know, of the mind that when given the opportunity, it's, it's. If you haven't been given an opportunity to share that, it was an opportunity to do that. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's the way things are. Because I had the similar as Counselor McGoon, but, um, you know, I find human nature is, is that we like to, to. To say what isn't working first, get that out there because we haven't had that venue. But I think the other side of this is that we have a group of people that are dedicated and want to work for the town in Hinton. And I think that's why that might have come out. That's my perceptions of it. Um, personally, uh, I don't, I was trying to, you know, put myself in their shoes. So, um, I, that's just my thoughts on that. But I do have the, to follow up, if I may, Madam Chair, quickly on my initial is. I think this falls into Mayor Michael's bringing up number forty on community peace officers, but this also piggybacks, I think. To that conversation of developing and updating standardized operating procedures. Which would be in those service levels that we have not established. We haven't, as you said, like many other things. Is we haven't had a conversation as a council. What do we want the policy to look like when it comes to. Our bylaw services or C P O services and things like that. So I think that piggybacks. That before we go and add a C P O, I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, we're gonna, I, I personally think we're going to lose our. Only C P O if we continue to work them the way we do. Uh, that's my opinion. But I think we have to, before we go ahead and add one, look at forty one first and figure out what do we expect of our C P Os. Um, to start things off. So those are my thoughts on that, because I don't think it's a matter of just throwing a new staff at it. It's looking at that service level as a council, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I thought that the report, like Ryan, went beyond the service levels a bit much. And it went too, too little under the service levels. Yes, I understand we don't have these things written down, but there's common practices and we could have asked those staff and documented what's on those common practices and compared those other towns. C P O is a perfect example. We just blurted out, we need three people. There's no discussion of what they're doing versus other towns. Where they do traffic or whatever. There's no, um, comparison of, uh, three or four of our major service levels on what we do. By talking to those staff like, like snow removal or what are we doing? What are our standards? What are their standards? That's the sort of stuff that I thought that, uh, we were missing. You know, comments on, uh, organizational operations, departments, governance, financials, wasn't the stuff that I expected in this report. Another comment would be, there's very little in here that I would regard as new or innovative that we couldn't have sent the senior management team away to have, uh, come up with. By themselves, just like maybe what I would call five or six recommendations, um, that I think fit into that category. And finally, I'd agree with those that say that, uh, a lot of the comments, I don't agree with Counselor Ross, a lot of the comments seem to be dated. And these are things that we substantially already, uh, tried to address with this council. A lot of the comments seem to pre, pre, pre-go back to the last. Council and we're bringing that forward and we are actively trying to address those comments with this, with, uh, with this council. So to have separated those comments out that maybe you apply to the last council, recent comments that apply to this council. Is, uh, is, uh, is, uh, is, uh, what I thought should have been done. I, I don't feel that I got what I was expecting, like another member of other counselors and. I'd like to send you back to get some of what I was expecting, which is more information on those service levels and those comparisons with the other, because of the hotel. So that's my feeling, please.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, Counselor McGowan.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and again, just to, and I, I apologize for driving this home, but I feel very strongly about this. When I did my interview, I tried very hard to stay away from any possible perceptions I had about, for example, what town administration. Management workers do in their time that I don't observe, because I, I don't see it. I can't speak to it and that is way outside my lane as a counselor. Council has one employee. We all know that. So to comment on the performance or the perceived performance of administrative staff. Or directors or managers or frontline staff, that would be vastly inappropriate. And I, I would challenge you and say, how would we feel as a group if this report included a section that said. From council, what we've heard about staff. It'd be way out of line. But yet we have a whole section that's dedicated to that within this report. That's put forward by a large group of people who don't interact with council, even on a weekly basis. Right? We usually interact with our C O as we should, and we interact with direct reports from directors sometimes. That's it. But yet we've, we've dedicated it a large section to what we've heard from folks about council who potentially don't work from council. Again, so for myself, I feel, I'm upset because I feel like as a group, what we do. Is being professionally slighted, put on paper, but there's no substantiation to it. It's not appropriate. It's my feelings.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Laverch.
Yeah, I'm actually okay with that. Thank you. I'm actually okay with that. We're public, they're not. So, uh, I think if that's always fair game. Um, as, as long as comments are weighted. To, uh, reality. I mean, if those are, if that's what people had to say, that's what they'd say. Um, and I think that's fair. Um, and, you know, don't take this job if you don't, if you don't want people to say bad things about you. Because I've had very few positive things and lots of negative things. I think that's just part of the job. Um, and so I try and do the best job I can. If that's the way people feel, oh, well. Um, so I think that's fair. I just think when we are making decisions go forward, let's, let's wait it. Uh, based on, on, um, current, not past.
Thank you, sir.
Doug has had his hand up for a while.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Doug, please go ahead.
So, Madam Chair, if I can speak to a couple of things, um, there was a question there about frontline staff being interviewed. Uh, I'm not gonna speak extensively about this, but don't, let's not forget. We had a strong level of intimidation within the organization for some people to came, come forward. They were worried about their jobs. They did not want to be interviewed. So let's not lose sight of that and I'll have nothing further to say on that. Don't overreact to the council relations. Part of this goes back to the previous council, as Counselor Sturt has said. If we had not told you what we heard, we would not have been doing our job. We have to bring that to your attention. There's no question. It's recognized in the report that there's great improvements and staff appreciate that. But when you say that you don't interact with staff, that's correct, but every decision you make has an impact on staff. And they have to deal with it and juggle their workloads and service deliveries, et cetera, to accommodate that. So that's a big part of it. So when you make decisions, it has an impact on staff. And when you change those decisions, that has a further impact on staff. Now, uh, I forget who raised the question about, uh, I think it might have been the mayor that was asking about. When you, uh, talk about increasing another C P O, we're talking about service level. When administration comes forward and asks for another, excuse me, staff member, say a C P O or equipment operator. There should be a business case with that request included in the budget documents. And there they should be able to describe what the service level is that they're trying to achieve by the additional s- staff that they're requiring. Now, it's very hard for us to go out and benchmark your service levels to other communities. When you have nothing on paper what describes what that service level is. And Doug spoke to that. We can't compare your service level to another community because nobody can define what your service level is. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Counselor McGowan.
No, I, I withdraw from the queue, Madam.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, pivoting a little bit, uh, the only other section I wanted to solicit a bit of feedback. Was forty two that, uh, you're recommending to repeal the Clinton Police Town Leasance Committee. Um. My concern with that is we, we still do quarterlies, uh, we communicate. Uh, we can go the traditional way and this was an added level of monthly, uh, or, or more frequent, uh. Opportunities for myself and a counselor to communicate and bring up, uh, timely issues. Where council and, and, and maybe there's room for council to, uh, use this and, and, and bring their concerns through that committee. Uh, which is an opportunity, but why want to repeal something that adds more communication? Uh, is there an alternative that you seek or you want us to have less sort of, uh. Uh, structured conversations with, uh, bylaw and R C M P?
Do you wanna take this one, Doug?
Uh, no, you can go ahead and then I'll add into it.
Um, I guess because we feel that it is council's job to set these, these standards of service and so. R C M P is a very significant part of what goes on around here and so all the challenges will be involved with those decisions. And that's why we're doing it. Whenever you have a committee that does something and then they bring back information to council. Does it all come back or is there things that get left behind? And so that's why we just feel it's better if all of council, uh, is involved in those discussions.
And, and through you, Madam Chair, I would just echo what Doug was saying. It's an opportunity to engage all of council. In what your policing level should be.
So, so if I may, uh, perhaps we agree to disagree, uh. The, the problem that used to arise was the conversations became so high leveled and so having ten people at the table. Uh, makes it challenging and you still have that. So I guess I, I, I'm still unclear because they, they still come and present the council and we have that. All of council conversation, this is another level. So it would come quarterly. We have exactly what you're saying and this is above it. So that's where I still struggle that. I agree with you, all of council has that opportunity and it's four times a year. So, um, yeah, perhaps I'm, I'm not framing it correctly. But, yeah, thank you. If I can respond to that, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I'll just say that absolutely, you know, these recommendations are there. But what we're recommending, if you as a, as a council and sit down with your C O and, and other staff and you talk about this and, and you feel. This is not right for you. It, it's working the way it is, then by all means continue. You decide what that level of service is, right? So if that's what you wanna do and it's working, then carry on and you just say, no, we're not gonna follow this recommendation. You don't have to accept all these. We're not, you know, to be all the end all. Like I said, we come in, we do a snapshot kind of thing. So. There's things that you do and they work for him. They might not work for Edson, they might not work for Devon. And if they're working here and you're happy with that and you as a council wants to do that level of service. And you, you, you've updated this bylaw. I don't know how this bylaw is, you've gone through it, looked at that and you've updated it. You've now defined that level of service and we're fine with that.
And through you, Madam Mayor, Chair, to, a question to the mayor. Um, under that bylaw, and I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. Do you bring a report back to council of those meetings?
We, if I may.
Yes.
Yeah, we do. The, the council reps, uh, appointed to it, uh, speak to it at a reporting.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. The truth, Counselor Ross.
Yeah, um, just a real quick piggyback, and I appreciate the fact that, that, I don't think. Again, it's about nitpicking what you guys did because you made it very clear. We, these are recommendations that came out. We don't have to follow them. I, because I see this one, uh, as more of an information to the public. What is our service doing in our community? And that's why Counselor McGoon does a great job of bringing that back. And it's an opportunity to share that rather than every three months or quarterly with the R C P. So I like that service. So I, I think that, again, it's an example where that's great input, but we reevaluate it and then, hey, it's good. We like it. We're gonna keep it. So this, this, this puts us where we ask those questions of ourselves. So I appreciate that. My question now is to administration on this because, uh, one, I'm putting myself in our new C O's. I think this is very valuable potentially for you going forward as well, but what I saw, uh, Director of Corporate Services. Uh, kind of quietly state though, but in the next budget process. We are going to see different discussions of service level potentially. Because you were saying that we will know where that money's going. We will know that, i- is that safe to say that what we've seen in the past financially? We will have a better picture of based on the, 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 just the comment you made, this Director of Corporate Services.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
That is my intention. Uh, I have a personal desire to grow the financial reporting and to bring that through. I don't know that maybe we'll see all of it in twenty twenty-three, but I'm hoping that you will notice. A significant improvement to where you've been and we can move forward on that. Truly, it's a short time from now till next June when they anticipate the next budget meeting to happen, so.
So if I may follow up on that, is this also going to trigger then priorities of policies coming forward? You know, with the work that you're doing and say, look, you know what, our snow removal policy was updated in whatever date. I can't remember. You guys said it in the report. But a long time ago, that is that going to come out to, through some of these discussions and recommendations moving forward? So that we can get these things in place and updated?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, if I may. Yeah, there's no questions that the town is lacking when it comes to the structure or the organization. The bylaws, the policies that was evident very early on, um. You know, and we will certainly be bringing forward something to council in short order. That puts us on a track to getting those in place and that does come with service levels, uh, which is, you know, as. Identified in this report, they are critically important. Identified in this report, they are critically important. Um, we don't know what they are. We have maybe anecdotal evidence throughout the organization, but we can pull that together for council. Um, and it comes to all the other policies that are, that are significantly out of date. So we will be seeking information with council as well on. Uh, the priority of those budgets, or sorry, the priority of those policies. The priority of those bylaws because there's a lot of them. It will take councils whole term, I suspect, to get all of these. Uh, in place because there, there's a lot of, um. A lot of these are lacking, so it, it'll take some time, and I think that we should go at it, uh, and take on the, the important pieces. First, uh, and work our way through the rest.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor McGon.
No, I withdraw, Madam Chair.
Okay, and Counselor Levarish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, uh, I, I'm, I think we're starting to chase our tail here a little bit now. And um, it's tiptoeing towards eight o'clock, um, and I do appreciate Doug's comments that, you know, this is ours. So I think we should have a look at this. I just, I don't think we have time to do it tonight. Uh, so I pray out to my fellow counselors, is this something then that needs to come? And I don't know how our next committee of the whole meetings are scheduled for the next while, but it's going to take some time to work my way through or work our way through it. So I'm, I'm curious the thoughts of, of council.
Okay, in regards to what Counselor, um, or Counselor said, does anyone want to respond about? Go ahead, sir. Are you, did you want to respond to what Counselor Levarish said?
I do, but I don't know what Counselor Stasher, so I can, so I can go first, I'm related, okay. If I may, I agree with this. I think this is a conversation of one of those. Is it a community whole or is it a workshop sitting down with their CEO or senior management? Uh, I think that that is exactly what your recommendations are, is to look at this and then we can. Filter out, council doesn't want anything to do with this one or administrative, but which ones do we want to prioritize? And what I'm hearing is CEO already is thinking that, but I agree a hundred percent wholeheartedly with Counselor Levarish that that's. That's the work that needs to start this process. So, yeah, absolutely.
You're good, thank you.
Counselor Stasher.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I do agree that this should be a conversation for another day where council sits and has a discussion about all the recommendations. But while our consultants are here, I do have a question about how one of the recommendations was, uh, was come to. Most of them, I, I was able to see that the justification, the written explanation have led to the recommendation. But uh, specifically to recommendation number five, couldn't really find the justification for it. And, and it's mentioned a couple of times, uh, let's let the council procedures bylaw be renewed and updated as soon as the legislative clerk is hired. So I'm just wondering what was that? Was that derived through comments that were made through the interviews and the survey? And that the procedure bylaw should be looked at to address some of those concerns that were brought forward? Or was that from an actual review of the actual procedure bylaw? And I ask because our procedure bylaw was only updated about fourteen months ago. And it was through committee with working in conjunction with the uh, legislative clerk that was on staff at the time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Doug answer this because I know he was more involved in this specific topic than I was.
Through you, Madam, uh, Chair. Really, when you bring a new legislative clerk on staff, if you do, if you do follow that recommendation, I think you probably will because it was clear that council. Feels that there is a void there with legislative support at council meetings. It would just be good practice to have the legislative services review that bylaw. To make sure that everything is current, even though it's only fourteen months old, it doesn't hurt to go through a quick review of it. And make sure it's, it's current and meeting the needs of council.
Can I follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So there isn't, there wasn't anything specific then during a review of the bylaw or. Or through the interview process that pointed out that there were some gaps or deficiencies or non-compliance uh, with. With anything legislatively?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. No, there was nothing there that indicated uh, non-compliance with legislation or anything was. Uh, I wouldn't say a bad practice, but something that is not the norm. I just think it, it, it's good business sense. To have a new legislative clerk review it and make sure that that bylaw meets the needs of council.
That helps, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. So, um, council, any other, I have no one else in queue. Any other questions, comments? So are we looking for an action as in direction to, um, accept for information or? We're not seeing any of that.
Um, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, sir.
To, um, bring this report to a future meeting of council. To discuss the recommendations in detail, and, and I say meeting because I don't know whether it's a special meeting, committee of the whole. Or how we can do it, because I think some of this stuff should probably be dressed, addressed more quickly than not. Uh, but that this be brought to a future meeting or a detailed discussion of, of the recommendations.
Okay, so here's what I have to ask you. So, um, bring this service level report.
This exact report so we can discuss the recommendations.
So. And, and I don't know if it's to progress. In your direction. I, I would like to see the service level reports. We know what we want.
Sure.
And what we in, or first quarter, or what did you want to see this?
Next week, I don't know. Yeah, I think it needs to happen quicker than not. Um, so I think we need to have a look at when it could be put into the schedule. As quickly as possible.
So let me.
Um, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, through the rest of council, we can, we'll take a look and we'll, we'll determine. It will probably in conjunction with council on what the best time. Uh, to bring this forward because it will, will be, uh, uh, I think a fairly substantive. There's quite a few recommendations, so I think we need to block off a. Uh, a good chunk of time in order to address this probably, so, um. You know, I, I don't know, need to attach a timeline, but we can certainly, uh, communicate with council and determine what we want to bring it back.
Okay. All right.
And if I could speak to it?
Yes, sir.
Um, we've spent a significant amount of money, time and effort on this. And for us not to address this prior to budget would be a problem. So I, I think we need to, um, uh, and to, uh. Uh, follow on, uh, C O's comment, um, let's find the time that works for everybody and move toward to it then.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'll be speaking in favor of this. I mean, in an ideal. I'd like to do it after we get through the budget because we got a lot of work to do with that. However, that was one of the things that we as a council. In our strategic plan identified is having this to have some impact on the twenty twenty-three budget. So as much as I'd like to not add to administrations, but I think it's important, even if it's some. Minor things that we can adjust, whatever, and the, like, I think, yeah, I, I agree with Counselor Levarish and, and, and full support of this directions.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I believe I support this, the, my, my only concern and I guess. To ask administration, are there any other alternatives on how to get through this? While focusing on the twenty twenty-three budget, because my concern was sort of spoke to. To go through all of this is going to be a lot, a lot of time. Could we decipher, or can we cipher some of the stuff that relates to. Twenty twenty-three budget only? And then do the rest later. We're hitting November's budget season, the budget meetings. To me, that, I, I, I'm guessing, but this is many hours and hours of going through fifty-one recommendations. That's my only concern. That at least maybe we set the expectation that are we going to go through all fifty-one during the budget season? So I don't know if you have any comments on a different approach, or, or is this the recommendation that I've been in with you? On, on going through this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, through the chair to the rest of council, um. It's a difficult one because this, this is a, a, a major report and I would be. I don't think we would be doing injustice if we tried to cram it in before the twenty twenty-three budget because it is, uh. You know, administration is, um, I guess putting the, the final touches on it. If that's a fair assessment of where we're at. So, um, you know, we can certainly change budget priorities. Nothing will change after, um. December when we pass this, you know, this is what I think would be an appropriate process is if we look through the recommendation. Council says yes, no on all of the items or an amended item. Um, after that administration goes back and comes up with a plan on how we're going to address this with council. And that action list or that action plan, uh, be implemented as part of, and, and that can be. Mid twenty twenty-three adjustments if required, or that could be twenty twenty-four items.
Thank you. Jen, could you put the motion up so everybody can see what they are or who knows?
Uh, to a future meeting of council and, um. But, so not a committee of the whole meeting, just a future meeting in council, um, uh, following through on C O. And you use silent, right?
Fanatic.
Fanatic, yeah. Uh, so I would just like to say to a future meeting at council.
Okay.
Nope, that's perfect.
Uh, Counselor Taylor.
No, that's my.
And. Okay, so has everybody spoken who want to speak on this? All right, so I will, uh, we do have a, a direction and I will call the question. That administration bring the service level review report to a future meeting of council for review. Almost in favor? And then it's, uh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, so. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, given it's seven minutes to eight, um, uh, and there's a desire to finish our last. Item in closed session. Do we extend? Do we carry it over? What's the?
Can make the motions.
I just, I'm curious on what people have to say. Do we finish off today?
Well, we still have, um.
Hey, I, I, I'm going to put a motion that we, uh, extend the meeting.
Because we have a motion before us to extend the meeting, almost in favor. And that's carried by anyone, thank you. So, you know, um, that's it. Go ahead, Doug.
If I, if I can, and just, I guess sort of close off my part of the, we, we, with the council. Um, and then Doug and I can leave. Um, we just want to say that we're, we're pleased to see you're going to take action on the report and get it in the minutes so that people see you're going to deal with it. And like I said, if you don't like all the recommendations or you want to amend it, that's totally up to you. As long as you deal with it, that's, that's exciting to us. That you, you accomplish something and do something, and you make sure you hold your C O accountable to, to reporting back to you on where you're at. And we're available to the C O if he needs clarity on anything that we've written in here. There's, you know, we've heard some good questions tonight that. Um, you know, it's maybe in our heads, but we didn't write it down there because we didn't want a three hundred page report. If he wants to phone us or email us anytime on this report next week, next month, next year. Um, we're, we're welcoming that. We'll, we'll have a chat with them anytime, and that's part of the deal that T S I provides, so. Uh, we offer that to you and, uh, we just want to see council succeed and do good things with this report and provide services to your people.
Thank you, Doug, very much, and Counselor Hoss.
Just for clarity, though, you said to leave, but are you, you guys are hanging out for the enclosed session yet, aren't you?
Oh, I, I don't know if there.
Isn't that the intent? We didn't want to have the, our consultants.
My understanding of the closed session was that the party closed session and the reason that it was in camera, that was that it was talking about that spinoff. Project issue, that has nothing to do with the consultants. A gift for. That's what I was led to believe.
Um.
Maybe, maybe I was incorrect.
Through the chair, uh, my apologies, that was, uh, I think that was my fault, but I believe the intent was to discuss that because it was my. Understanding that that was possibly part of the report. Um, and I'm not sure, you, uh. You know, it may be easier for me to speak about this and, uh, not beat around the bush in a closed session, but, uh. You know, I thought that as an aspect of this report that, uh, may, may have been out of scope. Uh, there was a recommendation that was made to, uh, administration and council. And I thought that council may want the opportunity to ask questions on those particular recommendations. If council, uh, would, does not want to, then I don't think there's a need for a closed session. Um, I don't.
Go ahead.
Frankly, I don't think there's a need for a closed session item based on that conversation.
I disagree and it's on the agenda.
Just, I just have to, so are you saying that our consultants will stay for the closed session?
That's correct.
Yes. Oh, all right, so you know what? We just have to do our, uh, council reports and then, um. Okay, so our council reports, we're going to start with Counselor Hoss.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, not much to report other than the fact I did attend. Um, and I have to say I passed the test. I didn't say anything at my, uh, alternate, uh, committee, uh, to the, uh, historical society. Um, you know, it was, it was a great meeting, got a chance to meet all the, the board members. Um, interesting that we have a board member that doesn't live in Hinton. I found that kind of different. They live in Grand Prairie, but, uh. You know, we'll, uh, see what the future holds there, but, uh, no, it's a great group, a lot of great ideas floating around, so. And thank you for, uh, uh, Council Rays for inviting me to that as well. Um, unfortunately, I probably am going to have to turn to my, uh, alternate for, uh, I wanted to attend, but work schedule. Uh, I have my first ASH meeting on the second, but it looks like I'm not going to be able to make it, but I know Counselor Levarish is going. Uh, so he'll be able to represent there, so just, us, everything I had to report at this time. Thank you.
And Counselor Stasher.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything in particular to report this week, but I do have maybe, uh. Be no meeting tomorrow and Community Futures on Thursday, so next Tuesday I should have some information to report.
Thank you, thank you, sir, and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing, uh, to report on.
Thank you, sir, and Counselor McGon.
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir, and Counselor Keller.
Nothing to report, thank you.
And Counselor Levarish.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, nothing to report except I do have an upcoming ASH meeting on November.
So for all of you who did not have a lot of report, I'm going to fill in the blanks. I had a, uh, I had a busy week. On, uh, Wednesday I attended about a Hinton Historical. Meetings, but I thought it was very well attended, and they have a lot of great activities on, plan for the future. On Thursday I attended the inter-agency meeting at twelve o'clock. And it's, um, you know, bring your own lunch. People really don't bring their lunch. It's a, a talk session for one hour. There were, um, seven other agencies there. Each one presented a wealth of information and I'll tell you, it was very, very much appreciated. Something very important that I have to, um, talk about right now, and this concerns our Hidden Friendship Center. And November twenty-first to twenty-fifth, we have a hundred people coming to our town. And these are people who are part of the Head Start Program, the coordinators, their, um, the assistants, and here's what I want to read to you. Uh, okay, the event is land-based training and is being hosted by the Hinton Head Start Program. Through the Hidden Friendship Center. Approximately a hundred indigenous leaders and teachers from across the province. Will be in attendance from the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth of November. They will attend specialized demonstrations, local teachings and workshops, and the workshops will include. Porcupine quilling, local teas, um, traditional meat drying. Um. Offting. It it's, it's just going to be unreal. They're still awaiting some uh to finalize some of the details. And they will certainly share those as more information comes their way. They are looking for volunteers and I'll tell you, I signed up right away. To be a volunteer for this, um. This week. It's an incredible opportunity, exciting event for Hinton. And if any of council want to be part of it, just get a hold of the Hinton Friendship Center. And that is all I have to report. And Mr. C E O.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh. Through to the rest of council, I don't have very much to report, uh, being seven days on the job, but what I can tell you is I've been, uh. I've been very busy getting up to speed. There has been a. Uh, a lot of documents produced in the last little while that I thought was very valuable for me to review. Um. Uh, the service level document, the strategic plan, the tactical plan, the budgets, um. Uh, I've been working with administration, going through the operational business cases and the uh. The capital um plans, um. My, my time has really been co-opted uh in a process that does take a lot of time, but I think it's valuable having one-on-one meetings. Both with my uh direct reports and also members of council. So. Thank you very much for making time available to me. Uh, the few that have been uh very valuable to me to kind of get the context of what's going on here. Uh, and how I can provide some value. So thank you very much. Uh, as well as some external stakeholders. I met with the Staff Sergeant. Um, Shiloh today, and I've also met with Wes Frazier and Paul Giuglio taking a tour of the plant and getting up to speed in that way. And, uh. Winston in passing because the C P Os were were mentioned today. I believe the second or the vacancy for the peace officer has been filled. So, um. I'll be working in the next little while to bring council, I think, some more substantive reports possibly written, if that's uh the will of council, but. That's as of right now, that's all I have to to report.
Thank you very much. One more thing I have to add is yesterday, the first of our two. Affordable homes arrived. First one hit Hinton at four thirty-eight and to see that little cloud home. He put in that bridle and then the slings attached and then lifts it up and positioned. Was just unreal. And the second, um. Home, I think, went quite quickly. So that was really exciting. Okay, and um. Now what I'd like to do is, um. Just call for a break.
All right, point of order.
Yes.
There is council action pending, actually.
You know, actually, I didn't see that online. I missed.
If we can do that before I'm called breaking that one close second. I I had a question if I may, Madam Chair.
Answer.
So normally the action pen endings are pretty straightforward, everything, but this time there's three. Highlighted ones and I'm assuming they're highlighted because, uh. Uh, they're all with the potential to rescind the motion. But I guess it's just a question to administration that those coming back to council for discussion or does administration in motion to have come back?
Go ahead. Uh, through Madam Chair, through to the rest of council, uh, yes, those were highlighted, I think, just for administrative purposes to tell us that these were three that we wanted to bring back to council at a future date. In order to give us.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no other questions on that. Actually, pending or action complete?
Okay, my computer now is. I did not see the action pending was attached. Are you guys looking at it right now?
Or it's a third.
I can't. Please, C E O.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for the rest of council. Uh, my apologies. It looks like that is a part of my report. I don't have any. Uh, anything specific to mention other than those highlighted items, but uh, if there is any other question, so I'll do my best to answer or to uh have one of my. Uh, my staff.
Also, any questions on the options heading last? And see none? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we go into closed session with a seven minute break.
And all those in favor? Good, thank you.